The President of Karachi Toastmasters Club, Toastmaster, who is a very good Toastmaster.
Thank you so much Toastmaster, Aditya Shere. Welcome everyone to the meeting nine one four, learning together, rising together. And today we will be choosing our new ex-con, leading the next year twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. That's really exciting because last year when we did it, it was a wonderful experience and we have had a wonderful year. Yes, we have been online mostly, we've had a few hybrid meetings, but I feel we have done good. We have achieved a lot this year and next year we have bigger topics to achieve. And I hope we today we will choose a team that can achieve these targets. So with that, I'd like to ask you, T M Talab, do we have anything in the business segment?
Well, I'll just go through it quickly. In our first, there's a couple of things that that are worth mentioning. The first one is obviously the results from the last meeting. The best evaluator was Toastmasters Zehar Alatif, best Big Four Toastmasters Sayed Umar Haath, best speaker Toastmasters Latif, best critic choice speaker Toastmasters Latif, best table topic speaker Toastmasters Zishan Khan, and best facilitator went to myself. The other thing worth mentioning is that we are also having a combined meeting this weekend on June sixth with my speak Toastmasters Club, Canada. So almost all the role players and everyone have been finalized for that, but I strongly urge everyone to to participate in that meeting as well. And the third one is pretty much obvious, we are having elections today. So over to you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, D T M Talab. And today I think we have guests as well. So there is a guest, Kiran. Kiran, would you unmute your mic and introduce yourself?
Assalamualaikum. My name is Kiran Fatma and I am thirty years student at Karachi University. I am doing physiology. It's my third year and fifth semester. And also I am a BAP volunteer at TCF Foundation. And that's it.
Welcome to the club and welcome to the meeting and I hope you'll stay till the end. Mustafa Hussain, is he a guest?
Alright, yes, I'm not the, I'm not the registered member.
Alright, so please introduce yourself.
My name is Mustafa Hussain. I'm a graduate of N D D University, currently working as a research assistant in my, in my university same department. That's it. Thank you.
Welcome Mustafa to the club and to the meeting and I hope we can stay till the end. So with that, let's move on to the meeting today. Today we have a Toastmaster, who tells. Well, we are not unfamiliar with his charm and his humor. So over to you, Toastmaster Azar, lead the meeting.
Thank you, Madam President, and welcome all of you of today's meeting. I'm T M Asgar and today I'm Toastmaster of the evening. I'm supposed to coordinate with the meeting and today we have only two segments because of election. The second segment is general evaluation. D T M Talab bin Ahmed will be our general evaluator. But before I start the speech session, I would like to call the role holders to describe their role. Before we move to our first section and our first role holder is grammarian and I can see T M Latif. T M Latif, today you are the grammarian. Can you describe your role to the audience?
Thank you, Toastmaster of the day. My role as a grammarian will be to note down the correct usage or the most attractive usage of sentences in English language spoken by the speaker and the evaluators. Addition to that, I have a role of word master. So the word of the day for today is vigorous and vigorous means. Yes. Vigorous means strong, healthy and full of energy. So in a sentence, if you have to say it, you will say a tall, vigorous and muscular man. Another person who I really know through our Toastmaster of the day. Our Toastmaster of the day, T M Asgar's mother-in-law is very vigorous.
Thank you. On the spot, but remember. Okay, no, no comments today.
So I urge, I urge everyone to please use the word of the day vigorous and there are multiple meanings to that. You can add it as a strong, you can add it as fit, you can add it as eager. So there are many ways you can use it in your speeches and I will be noting down and please don't disappoint me. Thank you and over to you, Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you. Today is our counter role is Rabia Zishan, T M Rabia, you are our role today. Can you describe your role as a counter?
Assalamualaikum. Thank you so much, T M. My role today is our counter. I will be noting down all the Rs,ums and the unnecessary pauses. Every speaker takes during their speeches and also the role players. And I have already started noting them down. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And today our listener is Taha Hassan is available, Taha Hassan. Taha Hassan is not available.
He will join a little while later and then he will take up the role, yeah.
Okay, so the second role is a vote counter. D T M Talab, can you tell us how you collect the votes?
I hope you're not talking about the election votes, right? You're just talking about the meeting votes. Yeah. Yeah, so, so during, during five times in the meeting, all of you will be asked to vote first for best speaker. No, not five times today though. First for best speaker, then for best evaluator, then for best Big Four and for best meeting role facilitator. During those times, I will be floating a poll right here on Zoom and you will be able to vote for your favorite role player or speaker. In case the poll does not work, then a Google form will be floated. And as a vote counter, I'm not supposed to vote myself unless there's a tie. So that is my role. Over to you, Toastmasters.
Thank you. And today we have a timer. T M Azar, T M Azar, how do you do this, this timer zone?
Assalamualaikum everyone. I hope you're doing well. Today my role is timer and I will note the all time. And first, everyone complete, I show the green color, then I show the yellow color, third is red color. And another meeting, I will submit to my report to our president and Toastmaster authority. Over to you, Toastmasters, T M Azar.
Thank you, T M Azar, for describing your role and I can't see my last role player who's a joke master. So I would like to go to the regular.
No, actually your joke master is here. She's Toastmaster Hiba Khan.
Hiba Khan, are you there?
Yeah, she is.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Please come up with a joke. We are waiting for you.
Okay, hello Toastmasters and yes, how do poets say hello? How do poets say hello? Hey, haven't we met before? Hey, haven't we met before? And why don't calculus say? Why don't calculus throw majors? Why don't calculus majors throw house parties? Because you should never drink. Sorry, I'll come again. Why don't calculus majors throw house parties? Because you should never drink and drive. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Hiba Khan for your role. But let me know what about the ten minutes break when we are going to do it for our period, D T M Talab?
Actually, it will be right around the Maghrib Azan time. So when the Azan happens, maybe if a speech is going on, we can announce a ten minute break immediately after that.
Oh, so now then should we move ahead with the prepared, towards speech, prepared speeches? Okay, now we are on our prepared speeches and let me see my, the first speaker and his evaluator. Both are not here.
Yeah, you can move to the second one.
Second one, second one is, oh yes, the second speaker is Ali Ashar Anjum and his evaluator is, I can't see T M Latif today. Yes, he is there and in fact he is the one who mentioned my mother-in-law. How can I forget him today? The T M Latif, you are the evaluator of T M Ali Ashar Anjum. Please describe the objective of his speech before inviting him to deliver it.
Thank you, Toastmaster of the day. Today, I would like to add few things with Ali Ashar Anjum. He is the correct, real meaning of vigorous actually. He is always tentative, alert and first to say and accept. I have seen him doing multiple roles and he's no different until now. It's been almost one year. I'm seeing in Zoom meetings and every time. So ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmasters, guests, today my target speaker, Ali Ashar Anjum, will be delivering his distinguished Toastmasters first project, first speech. Purpose statement of this speech will be the purpose of this project is for the member to demonstrate his or her skills as a leader and a public speaker. The purpose of this first speech is for the member to introduce his or her plan and vision. Speech length will be five to seven minutes. Speech title. Another step ahead. Toastmaster Ali Ashar Anjum. Another step ahead. Over to you.
Okay. Am I audible to each and everyone? And you all can see my screen. A PowerPoint slide. Next slide. Good evening to all the Toastmasters. Today is a great day for me because you all can see this badge on my screen. It says there's distinguished Toastmasters. I can have costumes by saying that. So today is a great day for me when I am presenting my first speech of my D T M project. And as my project, I am going to lead the humorous speech contest twenty twenty one in the Karachi Toastmasters Club. But before I share my plan and vision, I would like to have a debate on, or, or, or my words on another step forward. It's why it is important to be the student. Why it is important to move forward again and again? Why it is important to dream? Why it is important to dream and fulfill them? And to step ahead, ahead and ahead. Because we all want to be vigorous. Because all want to to have that prestige. Prestige. A very good word. That usually claim as that everyone want prestige. You are going to university, Harvard, Oxford, doing PhD. And when you are younger, they say to you that it's all about the money. More you learn, more you earn, but this is only a myth. And we can realize it when we computer pastors. But why people, thousand of people go to the Harvard, Oxford and do higher studies? Because they want to be the student. They want that prestige. And what is that prestige that? It is not about getting the degree or anything. It's about the pathway, the journey of being the distinguished. They say to that a piece of paper degree didn't, didn't say about my skills, but that journey does. Because if a person is enrolled into the Harvard or Oxford, we can easily think that he would be the genius in academics because no one can get into it without a sure genius. He should be vigorous in his education. And that is a distinction. And that's why we all have to move forward because we all have dreams. I have a dream as a standard. I have a dream as a standard to speak so people can listen. I joined Toastmasters, but Toastmaster induced, Toastmaster have some values, respect, integrity and excellence. And what is excellence? To have a vision that to achieve that excellence and for me is to be distinguished is excellent. To be distinguished, the pathway of that leadership will going to induce me and develop me as a great public speaker, a good communicator and a faithful and loyal and a trustworthy leader. And with this vision, I am stepping forward and, and making another step ahead. So my vision is to hold the best humorous contests in the history of Karachi Toastmasters Club. Then we have this vision. It is a great vision. People will say, how can you do this? This is just an ambition. It is not, this is not a pragmatic approach, but I know that I have a theme of the Karachi Toastmasters Club and they have that potential. And so we all can achieve this. Probably be the best humorous contest in our history. What's my plan? My plan is just simple. And the most simple thing is, is, is very difficult to achieve because everyone knows that it is simple. The first thing is planning should be meticulous and with precision. We should note that each and everything should be up to date, up to mark and, and, and we have to set up the core values, that the values of the Toastmasters, that we should have respect. We should be the integrity, to be honest with ourselves, we should have excellence. We should have a concept of beauty that whatever we are doing, we are having the contest. So it should be, say, the audience will say, this is a beauty. Second thing is choose the best people and this is the most difficult thing for me because when you have lots of best people, it is hard. Targeting is foster contestants to, to exhibit their best in the contest. Because we all are great, but it due to certain reason, we don't exhibit our best in contests. Fourth thing is providing the best environment because best environments could, could give you the best results. Choosing the best people, the contest chair, the judge, the P R team, the role holder and contestants. Contestants are the key for the, for this whole journey. Because they are going to display their skills that are going to mix with our skills of leadership without them, nothing. And our P R team, we have wonderful people with us, very intelligent, creative, the contest chair, Toastmasters Imran Rana, a great guide for all of us and he just distinguished Toastmasters Sharukshana Vash. We are still looking forward for the role holders and, and the, I hope that after this, I would have a plethora of methods that we are going to be either contestant or the role holders. To foster the contestants to exhibit their best. We are planning to conduct an educational session for all the Toastmasters of Karachi Toastmasters Club. So by preparing their research, they should have a discussion with the, with the with the Toastmaster, experienced Toastmaster, to those who have mastered their skills. Second is what are the challenges? Because we should know our challenges. Our challenge is in the pandemic, we cannot conduct a physical meeting. And it is a very sad story for all of us. Because in a humorous speech, we need feedback from the people. But in this pandemic, the positivity is soaring towards the sky to have to limit ourselves. And moreover, Toastmaster International also said we have, it is preferable to conduct meeting in the online setup. And, and we have to respect each and every one's opinion and have to conduct it, it in the online setup. Of it, in this way, we can accommodate even African. This is a tentative timeline that how we are going to have, we have launch project, you all must have trooper, have seen my poster developed with a consensus of my P R team, then a team building that's about who are going to have those major role, my team. Then our first speech, it's, it's a second June and I am delivering my speech and then registration of participants. We have education session probably on the next week. So, and I'm quite excited for it. So get ready for the best ride. Because we all are going to make it that this event is going to be the best event in the history of the Karachi Toastmasters Club. So here is the thing. Thank you so much. Over to the, to Toastmaster of the year.
Thank you, Ali Ashar Anjum, for this nice speech. We have just seen a picture, at least three pictures. One of them is from Imran Rana. Imran Rana is also mentioned by our speaker and he is someone who is not only an ex-president, a toastmaster, but he happened to be someone who own us, all of us. And he happened to be the next evaluator of the next speaker who is.
Sorry, Toastmaster Azar, sorry. If you can please move to the first speech because both the speakers and evaluator are here now.
But now I'm in, in halfway.
Well, it's up to you.
Okay, so T M Imran Rana is, will be the evaluator of T M Mohammed Asgar, who happened to be another Toastmaster, but he is not a ex-president. T M Imran Rana is requested to please describe the objective of his speech.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Azar. I'm sure I'm audible and physical. Okay, so fellow Toastmasters and guests, today Toastmaster Mohammed Asgar will going to deliver his first speech from evaluation and feedback. The speech title is "The Power of Contemptious Stare and Lingering Gaze." The power of contemptuous stare and lingering gaze. Speech length is from five, five to seven minutes. Purpose statement, the purpose of this project is for the member to present a speech on any topic, receive feedback and apply the feedback to a second speech. The purpose of this speech for the member to present a speech and receive feedback from the evaluator. So Toastmaster Azar, we all know Toastmaster Azar is an amazing Toastmaster and he is extremely good in creating a humor. So let's see, let's hope for the best and Toastmaster Azar, the stage is yours.
Madam President, dear Toastmasters and guests, someone said, everything else you grow out of, but you never recover from your childhood. I grew up in an isolated rural area, not an illiterate family. Not a literate family, I mean. And in a fisherman community. Once I entered into the competitive environment of, of urban life, there is no sugar coating of the fact that I was bullied with contemptuous stares and lingering gaze. With a sense of not fitting in, which I later discovered was a result of my background, making me inferior or to put it euphemistically, making me different. This issue played a huge part in my early story. Now trust me, when I said from isolated rural area and illiterate family, a fisherman community was not a walk in the park. It was the triple threat of a sort. Now I'm not going into the humiliating detail of the disgrace I faced from time to time in my life. Over the years, I somehow developed a career, traveled the world and tried to, and worked at turning somewhat a difficult past into a learning experience. Now, don't feel pity on me. I'm not alone in this story line. There are people coming from the concentration camp with harrowing ordeals. Now, you may not be the victim of contemptuous stares and lingering gaze. But I'm sure all of us faced disappointment in our life in certain stage and thought whether we could be happier than we currently are. Now, when I was planning and drafting this speech, I agonized over how I would structure this particular idea in a way that was meaningful and make a sense for all of us who would hear me. Dear Toastmasters, it is possible that the life deal us with some harsh card, but most of the time we also add our suffering by refusing not to move away from our past or our early days. Now I'm not saying that we must erase our past altogether and pretend that it hasn't happened. That doesn't help. In fact, my experience is that can make the things more miserable. Yet I believe that we can begin to come to term with our past and learn to manage it. With that in mind, I vetted literature related to the personality development and customized three interlinked steps as a coping strategy to move from the past and rephrase them in my individual context, but relatable to all. One of them is understand why you, what you can come stuck in the past. Now, in my case, despite managing the other area Now, in my case, despite managing the other area of 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 my career, because of the poor educational background and because of the lack of opportunity. Since I served most of my working career in the rural district of Baluchstan, I could not developed my communication skills, which left me exhausted, frustrated, unfulfilled, especially when it comes to my communication style. Now, on the top of that, it reinforced a safety-seeking behavior. Azar don't attempt, Azar don't take risk. Now, I don't want to break the status quo, almost as if breaking it, I would break the comfortable spill I was under. Because I didn't want to break, to 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 move what I have become when this spill broke. So I was sort of stuck up there. The second steps which I come up with is how can you move forward? Now, moving forward for me is to plug the loophole in my communication style by developing skills, techniques and tools through speeches and greater interaction with the people. The third step is commitment to make the necessary changes. Now, this move is all about exposing yourself to the discomfort zone. In my case, it may be all about confronting my safety-seeking behavior by participating in training, communication classes and clubs such as Toastmaster Club. In Toastmaster Club, now I'm telling myself that I don't need to be perfect all the time. And it is okay if the best award is taken by J Q or T M Latif. Dear Toastmaster, as I said earlier, that I personalized all three steps. But they they are are relatable to all of us. Relatable because as they are together or them in boat, morals, yet with varying degree. Here today, I'm simply offering some oars, pedals, life jacket and a few players to get on on your way. Things can't be done in a eye blink. Improvement will be gradual, but sure. Rome, after all, wasn't built in a day. Over to you, general evaluator.
So, uh after clapping for the last speaker, now I would like to invite the first speaker because the both are available. Uh the first speaker is uh T M Kareem Meghani. And the T M Kareem will be evaluated by uh J Q. And I can see both of them. So please, J Q, uh describe the objective of his speech.
Uh thank you very much, Toastmaster. Okay. Uh Toastmaster Kareem will be doing a project on the pathway motivational strategies. It is level one. Uh evaluation feedback, this is speech one of this project. The title of the speech is Leading by Example. Uh timer, please note, the time is five to seven minutes. I wish you good luck, Toastmaster Kareem. Over to you.
Thank you, T M uh J Q. Uh according to the agenda, the timer is Azar Khan, T M Azar Khan. He's not there, I think.
No, he's there, he's there, he's there.
Okay, uh I just want to pin it.
He is making every effort to make himself visible.
Just one second.
Please don't start dancing.
Okay, I cannot time it. Ah, it's okay. Not a problem. Okay.
Sorry, sorry, Toastmaster Kareem. If we are having difficulty seeing the timer, maybe you can put on a timer yourself on your device. Maybe.
Uh, yes, okay.
Or you should trust your instincts.
I'll 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 see my instincts. My wife doesn't believe in this, but it's okay. Okay. Covid nineteen, another same story, yes? One and a half years, we are just facing the same situation. Covid nineteen, covid nineteen, covid nineteen. Since last March, our country isn't, was started the lockdown. But before that, China and then we were reading the news and all this situation of this particular pandemic was always depressing. One of the hope of this pandemic, when eventually September, October, we hear about vaccination. And then this whole politics start that which vaccination is good or bad. America, they had this Pfizer vaccine, okay, you have to do it in minus seventy. Then Moderna, then AstraZeneca, then COVID Shield, how you name it. Then Johnson and then Johnson then clotting the rumor about the news that, you know, maybe your blood will be clotted. Wow. This whole one year was such a journey. You know, every time it's in a roller coaster coaster. We were just looking at this journey and we see what is happening, man, where is the hope? And I was looking for that hope. Dear Toastmasters, Toastmaster of the Day, dear guests, why I'm sharing you about this journey? Of course, my speech title is not COVID. My speech title is leading from example, lead from front. Show you, show things from yourself. That is the speech title today I choose it. And but what, why I choose it? Because of COVID. You know what happened? When the first thing in Madagascar, they announced the COVID shield vaccine after so much politics. That you know, first they were saying that Madagascar have some herbal medicines, you can take it and you will be then suddenly the vaccine is being announced because the second wave is too powerful. And what is the vaccine? COVID Shield. I don't know what was this vaccination. And just two weeks ago, they said they allowed COVID Shield and W H O will be doing it in their premises. I said, yeah, Kareem, are you sure about it? How we will tell our community members to do it? How I will tell my family to do it? I'm comfortable, I'm confident about it. I start reading. I start reading about this, I start reading, researching everything about it. And you know what I did? In one week, last Sunday, I tell my wife, Simon, nobody in the community is going to this vaccine. Let's us to be the first. Let's start it. My wife said, Kareem, I I trust you. I trust you, but you are really sure about. Said, yes, Simon, we we should do this vaccine. Uh there is no other solution than vaccine issue. Okay, I'm okay with you. Next day, Monday morning, seven o'clock, we reached to W H O. Long line till eleven thirty, we got our chance, we got the vaccine. Alhamdulillah, the doctors checked us, the analyzed us, everything, and they did something that, you know, they tell us that, you know, after the vaccine, they want to observe everything. Everything was okay in the nights, little feverish. That was the whole situation. But at that time, I talked to my community health board member. I said, I did the vaccine, I'm sure about it that this will work. And the health board member said, that but how we will convince the community? I said, let me do one thing. I have so many followers on all the social media. I don't know why, because I lived in so many countries, but I have. Let's do one thing. Let's take pictures of me and my wife with this vaccination card and tell them that I did the vaccination. And so what I did, I took the pictures, I presented everywhere. And the whole night I receiving calls, what is this vaccine, how it works? Are you sure about it? I said, I'm not sure. I'm hundred percent sure this will work because I'm still alive, I'm not dead. And there is no blood clotting. It will help me. It will help you. And you know what happened? Our community is organizing for hundred people vaccination this end of this week. And why? Because the health board member called me, said Kareem, you did it. Now all the community wants to do it. I'm not saying I'm a hero. But somebody have to lead it. You have to believe in this message. If you believe in this message, you can do it. But you have to show it. If I'm saying something in the office, if I'm saying anything in my life and if I'm not showing it in my character, nobody will believe in me. So, let's be the first person to do it. Let's be safe and be vaccinated. And today's my speech is all for my Toastmaster friends. If you didn't do the vaccination, do the vaccination. Over to you, Toastmaster of the Day.
Thank you, Kareem Meghani. Thank you for this persuasive uh speech. I have already done my vaccination, but my driver refused because as Abu says that uh they will die after two year or within two year, I don't know. Uh had I known it, I would have not done it. The next uh speaker is
Sorry, sorry, Toastmasters. If we can take that ten minute break now, it will be great.
Yes, yes, for Nima's break. Yes, so the ten minutes is it is uh six thirty and we will be here by six forty, right?
Yeah.
Seven thirty.
Sorry, seven thirty.
We'll reconvene at seven forty, seven forty.
We will convene at seven forty. Okay, uh Kareem. Kareem. Hi Kareem. Kareem.
Sorry, uh you're calling me?
Yes, Kareem, uh your wife's name is Simon, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Hope your mother, mother-in-law's name is not Farida.
No, it's Yasmin.
Because my wife's name is Simon.
And in fact, I went to another, for my wife just came to the office uh to collect my boy. And and she was talking to my mother-in-law and she was wearing a wonderful but you know, you're looking gorgeous today. Thank you, sir. I hope I managed the time. I didn't see the timer. Okay, okay, thanks.
This session is being recorded, just so you know.
Thank you.
Even during the ten minutes break, but we have the ability to cut down this ten minutes.
I think we can resume, Toastmaster of the Day.
Uh well, let's see if the uh evaluator and speaker is available, yes. Um our next speaker is uh Mohammed Talha, engineer Talha, if I'm not wrong. Uh, yes, uh and the evaluator is uh Shamil Shehriya. So please go ahead with your evaluation, describe the objective of the project.
Uh it's pronounced Shamil Shehriya. Am I audible? Okay. My name is Shamil Shehriya, okay, um it's pronounced. Uh T M Mohammed Talha will be giving his, will be delivering his first speech for evaluation and feedback. The title of this project is Talha's Law of Personal Development. His speech length is five to seven minutes. Over to you, T M Talha.
Thank you, Shamil, and all T M colleagues. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is engineer Mohammed Talha. So the topic is laws of personal development. I have added the word prefix Talha's laws of personal development. It would not be, today's law is not from uh my part, but it is from one of my mentors, whose name is Jim Ron. So he has given this philosophy of law of seasons. This is wonderful philosophy and this is a life-changing philosophy as well. So Jim Ron says there are four seasons. Nature has gifted us four seasons. Winter, as we all know, that which is followed by spring, then summer and then autumn. Jim Ron says, as nature has given us this these four seasons, same goes with our lives as well. Same thing is happening in our lives as well, just like which is happening in these four seasons. He starts off with the the season of winter. By this mean, by this he means that the tough time in our lives. Because in winter, as we see in the America, the winter, in the winter season, the life stops because of the extreme weather, extreme cold. So in our life, he says that the difficult times, the like like the time of the COVID, the time of unemployment, the time of recession, the time when the life is not going well. The time when you are sick, the time when when you are facing trouble, the time when society is overall going downward. When the time, when we are facing security challenges, when we are facing tough times. When we as a nation, when we as a community, when we as a OMA facing tough time, that time is the winter time. Jim Ron says, don't lose hope, don't lose hope. In winter time, you should prepare for this springtime, which is coming. And the the positive person is seeing, he believes and he's he's preparing himself, herself for that springtime. He gathers the seed, he he talks to the person, he 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 prepares his canals, he prepares his waterways, he he talks to the tractor person, he talks to the person. He clears his land, he cultivates his land, he is preparing for that spring season. Now, spring season is the next season. That is the opportunity time. And the person who has prepared, who has not lost hope in the winter time, who 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 was prepared for this time, who has prepared for this time, that person will avail this opportunity. Springtime is the opportunity time. It is the time when you should apply for the jobs. It is the time when our economy is growing at GDP, our G T B is improving at the rate of four percent. It is the time when COVID situation is like uh it it's dampening. It's the time when when the situation is getting better. It's the time of getting a reward. So it's the time. So in the in in our lives, the spring means the opportunity time. And for a farmer, it means to sow, to sow the seed, to cultivate the seeds and hope for the best. Now, life is tough. And it's vigorous as well. And spring is followed by summer. In the, spring is followed by the summer. For the farmer, the summertime is the hardest time. Because because it it's the time when the nature comes into play. It's the time when the farmer has done everything well. Which he could do, but the flood happens, lightning occurs. And bugs attacks, bu- birds, bugs attack on the farm fields. It's a, it's a time for us in our real and practical life. You have gotten a job, you have completed your M B A degree, you have done everything which was possible in your domain and now you are now, people will attack you, they will do politics, they will do, they will thi- this is how the life is, the arrangement is. Now you you need to hold your ground, you need to hold your horses, you need to be on uh on the ground and face the challenges. Don't lose hope. In those difficult times, you you need to stick yourself to your job, to your business, to your life, to your commitments. And just focus on your, just focus on your path, just focus on your tasks, jobs and whatever you are doing. So in summertime, Jim Ron says that you 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 need to nurture your career like a mother and you need to defend like a father. Then the summertime, if you, if a farmer is able to protect his uh like crops and a person in our life, in a real life scenario. If he protects himself or herself from the negative and negative people and and the challenges of the life. the negative and negative people and and the challenges of the life, then there will be autumn season. And autumn season is the reaping time. Reaping time for the farmer as well and for the person as well. That time is when annual increments will be given, when on, when the rewards will be given. So it is important for the, to prepare ourselves for this autumn time as well. And for that and this process then goes on and on and on. This is a cycle, winter, spring, summer and autumn. So it's not easy, life is not easy, but we, and it will reward for those who will continue to strive and who will be part of this circle, who will part of this. If any person who is not who who detaches himself from this path, that person will not be rewarded. Challenges will be there, but with challenges, there will be opportunities. With problems, there will be like solutions and so it it is a message from my side that we should remain hopeful and we should be part of this cycle of life. So that's it from my side and uh thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you engineer Talha. Life is tough and vigorous as well. What a great speech done with Vigor. Uh our next uh speaker is uh TM Shamam Khan. TM Shamam uh will be evaluated by TM Ali Ashar Anjum. TM Ali Ashar, uh please uh describe the objective of her speech and invite her on what true stage for her speech.
Thank you so much. Toastmaster Azad, the Toastmaster of evening. My target is speaker Toastmaster Shamam. Uh she is delivering her project of leading in difficult situation. The purpose of this project is for a member to practice strategies for adjusting to unexpected changes. This and finalized plan. The time duration or the speech length is five to seven minute prepared speech and five to ten for improve to response. So best of luck, Toastmaster Shamam, over to you.
Am I audible and visible? Okay, thank you.
Yes, excuse me, excuse me, uh two things. First of all, Mr. Timer, please note that the time of the project is fifteen to twenty minutes, number one. And number two, uh Toastmaster Shamam, I would appreciate if you can explain to the audience again what they're supposed to do after the end of your speech so that everybody is ready by then. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much and I hope it's not being counted in the time allowed, right? Okay, so I have uh all of you Toastmasters and guests, you can see in the Zoom chat, I have shared a file. It's a pager and on WhatsApp group with our Toastmasters members from Karachi Toastmasters Club, they have got this file also and I have given the description that once I'm done within five to seven minutes with my speech, which is about a plan that I'm going to share with you and it's a finalized plan. Now, after I finish my speech, I would request Toastmaster members and the guests to come up with uh you know, the challenges that may disrupt my finalized plan. That can be anything, examples could be hmm rain comes, you know unexpectedly, Karachi is flooded and uninated. Please don't use it as a question now, I have already used it. So uh these kind of challenges that may disrupt my um a plan, that could be uh the plans can be any. It could be official organizational or personal plans. So I will be sharing with you a personal plan and then I'm done, I will request the Toastmasters to come up with the challenges. I will try to respond to tho- those with solutions and that is the project of my, the purpose of the project today. Um I would, of course, given the time, if there is enough time, uh we would take more questions. And otherwise, it's limited to three to five questions. And then maybe if it's very interesting and you want to know what my response would be to our challenges, you can always uh write your things uh in the Zoom chat and I'll be happy to respond to it later after my speech is over. So is that clear to everyone? TM Talha, you think so?
Uh yes, I think it should be plenty clear and now I think you can start your speech formally. So Toastmaster Azad, you should start timing as soon as Toastmaster Shamam starts the speech.
Yeah, and one more thing to the timer, uh first signal I would get at around seventeen or eighteen minutes, right?
Uh esper.
Actually, it's fifteen to actually fifteen to twenty minutes, yeah. So perhaps fifteen minutes green and maybe seventeen and a half yellow and then twenty red. Is that okay, Toastmaster Azad?
Yes, yes, uh when you cross the fifteen minutes, I show the green signal.
Yeah.
And then when you cross the seventeen or eighteen, then I show the yellow color and then you cross the twenty, around twenty, I show, I'll show you the red color.
Thank you, Toastmaster Azad. Uh following starting fellow Toastmasters, do you all like traveling? I'm sure everyone does, who doesn't? Well, hang on, in the next ten to fifteen minutes, you all are going to either wanting to make a plan or remaining to have one. In any case, I'm going to share with you um a family project plan that is around travel and tour to go to the northern border of Pakistan by road. The purpose simply is to reclaim the road which are deserted in amid amidst COVID lockdown. And we as travelers feel that the road is falling. Now, as soon as we are getting some signals that the roads are opening and tourism is resumed, we have planned this. Let me tell you first about northern border of Pakistan. It is the highest crossing border in the world. And how high, and also it connects with China. And how high? It's four thousand six hundred and ninety-three meters above sea level from where we all are now, if we all are in Karachi. So it's that high. That means traveling from the coastal region to the mountainous region. This also means covering a road distance of two thousand and two hundred kilometer. That means staying on the road not lesser than thirty-eight to forty hours. Now, the key deliverable, I would like to share my screen to give you a better idea is to to start from Hyderabad Superhighway, which is also a motorway now, get to the Multan Motorway and to Pirakaram Highway, getting on top, as you can see, is the Hunjarak Pass, which is the highest northern border of the world. Now, that is a key deliverable. You would ask me, what are the resources do I have? I have Honda City, two thousand five VGI, enough fuel saved from working from home since last year. So we have enough fuel hand in hand, some debits and credit cards and three ambitious road lovers. So with this resource, I being the project manager, have delegated administrative and logistic tasks to my team members. Team members happen to be me, the project manager, my son and his wife. So my daughter-in-law has started, started uh consulting the travel bloggers from wherever she knew. She researched through travel logs and identified first the road conditions, the safest routes. Secondly, the rest houses where we would be having on路break during the travel. Thirdly, the timings of when are we going to have a break, which is very important in a, in a travel by road. Fourthly, last but not the least, she is fond of local cuisines. So she has this long list from all over the places that we'll be going through and she has told everyone, no matter what, I'm going to try each and every savory that we'll come across whenever we are passing through regions because we'll be going from Sindh to Punjab to KP to then northern areas, Gilgit-Baltistan. And my son, his task was to get the advanced booking for the rest house, getting a car serviced and tuned for this long drive because it's, you know, it's sixteen years now, it's an old model. And then organizing for cash to be in hand along debit and credit cards. After a week of vigorous planning and learning together, me and my team are all ready to rise together to four thousand six hundred and ninety-three meters above sea level, that is Hunjarak Pass. Now, hello Toastmasters. I would like to request after explaining all the, the, the whole plan that we have in hand and we have finalized it as per best of our understanding, I would request you now to give it a thought and ask and tell me the challenges that might disrupt my plan. So we will take them one by one and along the process, I would then respond to those challenges with solutions. So over to you all the Toastmasters.
Okay, uh Toastmaster Azad, I think you raise your hand first, yeah, please go ahead.
Well, actually uh it's it's very good to hear you, especially the deliverable, you said you have a car, oh. Thank you to have a car in such an occasion, but you said that the travel is thirty-eight to forty hours. Who, you need an expert driver. You didn't mention who will, who will be in the driving seat. Is a he or she your family member and how many of them can drive? Because you need more than one driver if you, you are going by the car. Have you thought about this thirty-eight to forty, uh you know, hours journey with your own car?
Well, thank you, Toastmaster Azad, for bringing that up. The thing is that when I mentioned that I have worked with my team around the logistics and administration. So the timings that are decided are in a way that seeing the point that it will be three of us, me, my son and my daughter-in-law, all three of us are good drivers. And seeing, um since, since my daughter-in-law has researched a lot around the rules. So it's now, superhighway is full till Raniipur and Fehboor, there's a small patch where we would be having jumpy rides. And then we would move on to the new C-type motorway. So what we have in mind or what I think, uh what we have planned is that we will break, uh the timing of being on the road. We'll take breaks after every three, four hours, give rest to my car, that was a very good point. Uh give rest to my car and all of us stretch legs and then maybe take over. And but I can, I can see the way my son is excited and he feels the responsibility being the male uh you know, head of the family, even though he's a son. But he would say, oh, no, no, I can drive, I can drive. But yes, this is a very good uh challenge that you have mentioned and I think while we have uh already done the service and the tuning of the car, we must also keep handy the mechanic's contact numbers. So if we are stuck somewhere, we can call them up and find out. Also find out what are the points, the, the fuel stations, the mechanic shops on, on the road. So that you already have that. So maybe that's a very good challenge and thank you for mentioning it so that I have it in my contingency plan.
Uh Toastmaster Shamam, I have one major question and one minor question. The major question is, how have you ensured that all three of you will remain healthy throughout the travel? In terms of, you know, because there are so many elevation changes, temperature changes, even, even uh while in Sindh, you will experience at least three kinds of planet. And then you enter Punjab and northwards, it's uh basically all over the place. And the, that was the main question. And the side question is, how do you get along, how well do you get along with your daughter-in-laws? Will the relationship sustain over forty hours? Uh so yeah, over to you.
That's a challenge, quite a challenge, the second part of your question. Um and so I'll go with the serious part first. Um it's, I think it's about building the immunity and boosting your energy. So um this is a good point because most of the time when we are very excited, we get sleep deprived. Because we are always thinking from, right from now till the time when we are on the road, we would just be thinking and being excited and talking about it and getting a sleep deprivation. So I think building immunity, I would suggest to my team, uh team members, the both of them are millennials and they don't like to sleep in the night and they like to sleep through the day. So maybe I can mention this to them as a project manager, please cover up your sleep, have good sleep, boost your immunity system. So this is a good challenge, I'm noting it and I'll try to do it. Now, connecting it with and also to that, I think we will have enough uh hydration sources. They could be, uh because I know, um having been a vivid traveler by road, I know there are not good spots for the loo facilities, the washrooms on, on the way till the time you reach uh the Punjab motorway, there you find good things. But as long as you are on this belt, you won't find much because there is not much traveling on these roads. So um keeping hydrated would be uh my first priority. I'll try to keep fruits, I'll try to have fruits whenever we are going through. Um we will be having the seasonal fruits, so we will keep uh hydrated through that. So that could help us uh in our journey throughout. Now, getting back to my point when I'm thinking as a project manager, telling my team members to get a full sleep might start the conflict right then and there. So it's not only the daughter-in-law, my son would also say, hmm, she has come up with advice and, oh, we know what we can do. Don't worry, I'm telling you, we are telling you to get you through, don't worry about that and please stop advising to take proper sleep. So it's starting the conflict right then and there. Um but then yes, um thank God, Alhamdulillah. And I, I, I don't know if she is around and hearing this, uh but our mutual uh relationship had been um very optimal. It doesn't go into details, it doesn't go into micromanagement, even if I as a mother-in-law has to compromise on some things. But at the same time, I know that they know that I'm elderly and I can get fidgety at times and I start nagging. So they listen to me quietly and then they come back. Maybe you should take care of yourself and go to a psychiatrist. So I'm hoping that when we are back from this travel, I'm going to get this severe advice to get to the psychiatrist and get through with the anxiety and all that. So that was a good challenge that you proposed and I'm noting it in my plan.
Well, actually, all three of you will be needing a visit to the psychiatrist after the travel. Let me tell you from experience, so it's not just you.
Right. So if we have time, we can have a couple more people because I, I can't see timer, yeah, Toastmaster Taha.
Thank you, Toastmaster Shamam. The challenge is really good, but I have really, there are tricky questions for you. That is, hmm, we in Pakistan have the perks. The biggest perk is the uncertain condition arising the next hour. When you are traveling along the highways, sometimes you face that the highways are locked or there are long traffic lines on it. Can you hear? Can you hear?
It's a high earpiece. It's my turn you did from Toastmaster Kareem, uh but even then Toastmaster Taha, your voice is breaking. So I I can't get the 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 gist of what you are saying, but I'm not getting the actual question. So can you just, you know, be a little more closer to the speaker or something?
Now can you hear me properly? Well, you're still having some issue.
Uh if someone else can uh translate the question that and if they got it. What Toastmaster Taha is saying, um that will be great because I can see that he has a good point. Uh but I could not hear. Can you write it in the Zoom chat? Toastmaster Taha. Okay, in the meantime. Let's get to any. Yeah. Any other things that any one of you can add up to?
Can I ask? Please, this is Latif.
Toastmaster Latif, sure.
Okay, uh actually I'm I have done multiple roles. I've been.
Toastmaster Latif, you need to be a little louder.
Am I clear now? So I've been a scout.
No, we can't hear you actually. You're too.
Am I good now?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I was saying that I myself is a scout. So do you have taken any guidance of someone who have traveled in this season that what are the hurdles? I'll carry on with few more things. Uh there are some issues with the security, what we always hear. So are you aware of those uh security alerts or numbers, whatever the changes are happening? Plus, the power bank is very important. The internet connection is very important so that you know you can reach anyone at any time. Last but not the, why don't you replace a car with something? Not not to buy, just for rent a car. That's what I was saying. Rest all is your choice and enjoy your journey.
Well, um that's a very good point um because internet connectivity, first we will start with the security thing. Uh what we had planned already when I mentioned that my daughter-in-law has timed the breaks. You know, because we all will be driving ourselves. So the first and foremost thing there was to take care that we are not driving in the night. And secondly, uh uh as much as much experience as I have. Uh there are incidents, unfortunate untoward incidents on motorways, we have been hearing about it. But the travel is all about risks. And it is a good point that although we have tried not to travel during the night and stay to uh only the day hours. Uh the first priority. Even then, you're right that we must have contact numbers for the uh you know the regions where we are passing through. On Punjab motorways, I know um every two kilometer, there is a sign with the with the contact number, that emergency helpline. And I have my own experience that these uh motorway highway police is so um you know vigilant. And they take no time in responding to your call and getting to the point where if you need help from them. And God forbid, um I was stuck with a tire puncture on on the uh on the motorway and they came in help and we were through it. They just towed our car, that is uh and some three years ago. They towed our car in Bhatu low uh station. So uh the challenge is real great. Secondly, uh it's about the internet connectivity. And here we all are, me and my team members are very much ready to cut off from the world. To have no internet. We will have zong uh you know portable devices with us. But we want to just enjoy us and whatever we are seeing through. So even it's a it's a protocol not to make videos and pictures throughout. And it it came from my uh son to me that stop, drop your phone, view it in the naked eye. Don't try to capture it. The naked eye will remain with you on your deathbed. You will get through these scenery. So this is one thing, we we just want to be uh not connected with internet. But you're right, Toastmaster Latif, for the security purpose, we need to have some contact numbers ready. And know that which region has what kind of security or um you know support system. And if we get into such troubles. So I hope I have given a solution and I have noted it. These are good points actually.
Actually, Toastmaster Shamaam, uh uh it's not uh kind of a disruption, but it's something to prevent disruption. Uh you mentioned very rightly that in our obsession to capture everything, we just lose the sight of actual thing. So maybe uh you guys can uh fix the time slots during which you will for uh take photos. Or fix the places rather than allowing it throughout because yes, uh if you start taking photos, then you get lost in taking photos and you miss out the scene.
Yes, that's a good suggestion. And with that, I think timer is giving me a cutoff signal. Um uh but thank you so much all the Toastmasters. Uh your ideas, your destruction ideas, uh the real challenges have helped me prepare my contingency plan. These were really good points and I am hoping that following these and adding these in my travel plan. Would definitely take me to the four thousand six hundred and ninety-three height at Fajra Pass. Over to you, Toastmaster of the evening.
Thank you, uh Toastmaster uh Shamaam Khan. Uh thank you for your knowledgeable speech. Uh now we. I've reached to our last speaker. Last speaker is um. Let me see the last speaker. Last speaker is um TM Azar Khan. TM Azar Khan uh will be evaluated by TM Urusa Kaval. TM Urusa, are you there?
Yes, Toastmaster.
Okay, uh please describe the objective of his speech and invite him on virtual stage.
Sure. Toastmaster Azar is giving his present his speech from presentation mastery level four. And he, the objective of the speech is for the member to practice the skills needed to effectively use public relations strategies for any group or situation. And to share some aspect of his public relation strategy. We all know Toastmaster Azar at the Kai who created wonderful presentations and posters for DTAC as well. And he has been working with other districts also. So over to you, Toastmaster.
Uh Toastmaster Azar, I if you want, I can time you.
Yes, of course, uh just someone take the responsibility for my timing. Someone note my timing. And uh to today uh my speech, uh I share one uh demo because last time I shared my uh. Screen that was not too too good. But before my president, please check and let me know it's a good or not. I'm sharing my screen. Yeah, this one. Now everyone. It's looking fine or not?
Yes, it's great.
Okay. So now uh DTM now my time has been start from the green, yellow and red color. Bismillah. Assalamualaikum, Toastmaster and guest. I hope you are doing well. Today I have very interesting topic because it's directly related to my field. Public relation strategy. Everyone know about the meaning of the strategy. It's meaning some kind of planning, some kind of thinking about yourself, about your business, about your each and everything. Everyone has sort, strength, weakness, opportunity, threat. Every man, every brand, everyone who exit in the world. Everyone know about the sort, strength, weakness, opportunity, threat. This is my today topic is public relation strategy. With this, I today I am gonna share you my strategy and presentation. This is my first slide is object. What is your object? What's your product? What's your? What's your brand? Yeah, what do you want? Where want to go? And you should have some objective. You should have good adjective. It mean you achieve your goal. The first time you step, you know about your, okay, where I'm going. Let's suppose. I want to advertise and everything. First and foremost, I have to know about myself, what is my objective and what is my brand. Maybe I'm sharing to my personality, so I should know about myself, what I have. Like education, personality, knowledge, each and everything. After it, I will describe. Message. Basically now, why should I share my message? First, you should analysis weakness and and opportunity, qualities and values, each and everything. Before analysis, before your comparison, you through your message. It means you will see the bad situation or worse situation. Target audience. What is your, who is your target audience? Because it is very necessary subject. You have the good elements, but you don't know exactly where is your social network, your target audience. So how can you describe? How can you sell? How can you advertise your product? How can you yourself if you don't know about your target audience? If you research, you should go and just if you don't have any idea about the audience. You should discuss with your good marketing person. You should discuss with your friend. Care how can can we find our exactly target audience? There are so many people, but not all of them and they they are our target audience. We should have selected and limited target audience and then. So first objective, then message, then identify your target audience. After that, you apply your strategy more and more. Because if you know all specs, you everything, so then you will define easy, easy media. Everyone knows media has very good role in our life. There are so many types of mediums of media like TV, cinema, Netflix. Websites. Radio. Newspaper, magazines, books. There's so many kind of elements. Know how each audience will not benefit. You should know about the you benefit, your target audience benefit. Otherwise, no one will come in your visit, no one visit your website, no one visit your channel, no one visit come on your, no one will listen you. First, if you want to describe your element, is you describe your thinking. So first and foremost, you should give something benefit. You should share something or some kind of uh extra parts. Then you will maybe they will listen to you. They will listen, they will check your thinking, your products, each and. Deadlines. This is the. Final element. If you have a good. Objective, good or you have now sought out the your target audience, now you can select the media, you can select the uh uh each and everything. But you don't decide your deadlines. It means you will see the worst situation. So you should make some calendar, you should make a plan. Okay, now. We start. From here to there. Recently, we have designed big campaign. I'm sharing my real story. And there are so many people work with me, not not my own. So I started first logo. Then it approve it, then I started on like this campaign. Then I show the my effect, each and. And then. Because I have plan, I have the deadlines. If you don't have the plan, if you don't have a deadline, it means you can't beat your your you can't achieve that at all. The deadlines are very compulsory. So don't forget some my points about the this strategy. Objective, media, deadlines, each and everything you should know. Then you will achieve your good and best advertising. Thank you. DTM Talaa, how about you, Toastmaster?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Uh now we have come to the end of our uh. Prepared speech session and before going to the journal evaluation session, uh this is the time to. Uh have an election conducting and and DTM Talaa, TM Hina will be supervising.
Actually, uh two two elections. The first election is for the best speaker for today. And after that, I'll be handing over the floor to Toastmaster Hina to conduct X com elections. So everyone, please vote for the best speaker.
Just wanted to ask, has everyone qualified?
Yes.
No, 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 it's talking about the time.
Yes. Yes.
Basically, uh Ali Asher has crossed the time, eight minute and foot around fifty seconds. But otherwise, all uh TM Azgar, TM Kareem, uh Tiram Talha and Shamaam. Both are and Shamaam also, uh Shamaam, please note the Shamaam time. Two twenty minutes and around fifty-five seconds and then you.
Yes, but I, yes, but I think I think that was because I presented a suggestion to her. And that's what caused the excess of time. Otherwise, Toastmaster Shamaam had completed her speech. By the time you showed the red card.
No, just I'm telling you my noted time, it's up to you. Uh you decide. So I'm I told you about all speakers, Ali Asher to Shamaam and you noted my time.
So everyone, uh like almost half of the people have voted. So everyone, please, uh again, it pains me to say this, but just don't. Don't vote for Toastmaster Ali Asher since he has exceeded the time. Other than that, you can vote for everyone.
I admit killed some.
Wow.
Uh one speaker.
We have some tough competition.
DTM Talaa?
Yes, sir. I can I can hardly hear you.
I was saying excitement. Disqualified the one speaker in last meeting also.
Yeah, that's like um I am emerging into something of a disqualification machine. So people have completed their speeches and then I intervene and make them go over the time. So yeah, I'll try to control that. Okay, we have seven votes remaining. Everyone, please please cast your votes because a very interesting situation is emerging. So. We need your votes. And in the meantime, I think there's absolutely no harm. We can uh and I think I will hand over the to the president, Toastmaster Rusa. Who can then, uh you know. Officially commence the election process.
We will come again to our normal session and we finished our uh preparation, our prepared speech parts. Now we are moving towards the evaluation and evaluation will be conducted by general evaluator. And today our general evaluator is none other than our future president, DTM Talab in Ahmed. Okay. So first of all, first of all, let me take this opportunity for. To. Convey my heartfelt thank you to Toastmaster Hina. And her teammates on the nomination committee for once again performing this very, very difficult task. So amazingly well and. About Toastmaster Hina and it is Samir and Toastmaster Najin, all I can say is that. If we have something particularly difficult or challenging to do. These are the three or four names that we land upon because we know that they will deliver every time. So this is something we can learn from all of them, the way they conduct their roles, the thought they put into everything they speak. It is all continuous learning for us, so yeah, so yeah. As you may have guessed, we are now on to the breakfast. Because feedback is the breakfast of champions, so you'll be having a multi-course breakfast. The first one will be obviously, this is a dish called egg Benedict. And I have no freaking idea what it is or how, what it tastes like. But I'm sufficiently intrigued by it that I plan to try it out one day. So it's a French breakfast dish called egg benefit Benedict. And to serve egg Benedict, we'll call out our first evaluator of the day, Toastmaster Wulam Kadar. So Toastmaster Wulam Kadar, over to you.
You very much, General Evaluator.
But sorry, wait a minute, I think, I think we. We need to time you, so yeah, okay, fine, I time you.
Yes, I can do it, no, I can do.
Okay, thank you so much, Saath, thank you so much, thank you so much, okay. So yeah, over to you, Toastmaster Wulam.
Thank you very much, General E evaluator. Toastmaster Karim Meghani, as usual, you were the eloquent speaker today. Regarding your speech, the content, this, it was appropriate to what is happening these days. Every one of us, either they have been vaccinated, either they have got the first shot. Or either they are just thinking of it as to which vaccine. These are the three kind of people I meet daily, whenever I go to office or whenever I'll go mingle around with my friends. So the topic was so interesting that everybody was very attentive during your speech. You let, you informed us about different kind of vaccines, you informed us COVID shield, what COVID shield is all about. And how you took the first step from your community of taking the first vaccine. So regarding the content, it was absolutely good. The only thing which I would give you few tips and few advices or maybe some recommendation regarding the content. That during the speech, you explained what is the topic and why you have chosen? Like your topic was leading by example, you shouldn't have explained that, your, your topic, your speech was enough. To explain what your topic is all about. Secondly, if I talk about your body gestures. You started by clasping your hands together, not sure why, what it was that? Maybe there was an interruption in the starting of the speech. Or maybe you were some sort of, you was waiting for somebody to tell you that to start the speech, but your hands were clasped together. And I observed that it was clasped for good ten to fifteen seconds and then later on. If you are perfectly fine and you're, you had an open body gesture. You always dress very, so that's the very plus point of your speeches. A recommendation, your camera was on a portrait level. I would suggest that whenever you give speech, give it like a landscape mode, give it on a landscape mode, that would add value to it. Overall, your speech was perfect. I will give full marks to you, over to you, General E evaluator.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Toastmaster Wulam Kadar, let's move on to our next breakfast item. In typical fashion, this table is displaying now that I didn't want. At the precisely the wrong time, but okay, so yeah. So our next item on the breakfast is of course French toast and. Our concept of French toast is slightly different, but this is actually how French toast is eaten in fancy restaurants around the world. So to bring our French toast today, we'll have Toastmaster Ali Asher Anjum. Who will be, sorry, Toastmaster Latif Mansour Ali, who will be evaluating Toastmaster Ali Asher Anjum's DTM project part one. So Toastmaster Latif, please hurry with the French toast.
The mic is muted.
Thank you, General E evaluator, let me tell you, it's difficult for me to have French toast when I'm fasting. A leader is someone who knows the way, shows the way and leads the way. This is what I would like to say it for Ali Asher Anjum. What a brilliant personality he has shown by example. Everyone loves and know what is distinguished Toastmasters. But the way he showed it. The love to have that medal, the love to have that shield was amazing. I loved each and everything and first let me ask the audience. We have seen speakers standing and delivering it. With all the gestures. Today, Ali Asher, you were the first speaker who know how to sit and show the gestures. You were so excited about this that I can see each and every, should say smile as a million dollar smile. So thank you for explaining and giving this such a wonderful speech. Now I have. Some major points where you have excelled it, first of all, your eye contact amazing. Your delivery voice clarity, beautiful gestures, as I said, and there is no second opinion. Audience awareness, brilliant. Now what I would like to ask you, where you can work on? I might have missed it, but I think the date you haven't informed the audience. We all were waiting. Now, as you know what an event you are looking forward. It is very important to see your why. Why you really want this? Because there are many projects you can take. So one thing which came in my mind was that humorous competition was not being held. Entire division what I have seen or entire district what I have seen. So this is what you want to entroll into the audience, that what is humor and. I lack some humor which always was seen in you. I did not had some humor from you. This was the time for you to bring us to register and. Participate, so had that humor from you that time would have encouraged. One last thing which I would like to add, I have to evaluate on your speech. But your speech was missing a plan, I know you said that you will keep a planning for members to. To learn a lesson, but why not having it in a larger way? For that. Informational, you can invite many gatherings at the old district and can be a larger audience to be participating. Good luck for this project and over to you, General E evaluator.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Latif. And now we move on to the next course of our session or breakfast. Which is of course fried egg on toast, who doesn't love that? The comfortable, familiar delicacy of this dish is exactly akin. To the comfortable and delicious familiarity of our next evaluator, Toastmaster Imran Rana. Toastmaster Imran, over to you for Toastmaster Azgar's evaluation.
Thank you so much, General E evaluator, I'm sure I'm audible. Per those masters and guests, Rome was not built in a day. Today Toastmaster Azgar delivered an outstanding, spell bounding and thought provoking speech. A boy belonged to an isolated rural areas who brought up in an illiterate family. As a grown up bullied several times either by his own thoughts and by others. This is an amazing speech delivered by Toastmaster Azgar. And I can assure you that everyone can easily relate it, I personally myself related very easy. It's true, when you stop, when you stop progressing, you stop progressing when you stop taking rest. Then you brought up three times a piece of paper in which it was written. You talked about communication style, move forward and overcome about your shortcomings. And you explained them quite well. One of the strong area of your speech is playing with, with words. Like it was not like a walk in the park, sugar coating and there were some other amazing word sentences as well. I like the way you brought the speech title twice and it was perfectly gel. And it was perfect timing and you, and, and it has created a great impact in your speech. The way you brought the humor by not winning from Wulam Kadar. And Toastmaster Latif Mansour Ali was spot on. And again you uses your precious technique using, playing with, with words like. Don't need to be perfect all the time, that was perfectly done. And the cherry on the top, the way you ended up, the conclusion and the, the way you brought up. That phrase, Rome was not built on a day, it was outstanding and marvelous. Judging Toastmaster Azgar, evaluating Toastmaster Azgar's speech is really a very difficult task. Throughout the speech, you were very confident. Your hand gestures were perfectly aligned with your body language, however, if you could have used the stage properly. Along with the flow of your speech, you could, that would create an amazing impact on your speech. Second thing is that. Your eye contact was like most of the time like this. And the way you were standing like means you were, most of the time was bending, it was not appropriate at the eye level. So you can work upon on that. And third thing is that I request you to, to bring that piece of paper. And hold it for a minute so that everyone, everyone can read that. And after that, you move that piece of paper from the screen. Just these three suggestions, overall, it was an amazing, amazing speech and I thoroughly enjoyed. So with that, I congratulate you on, on this project and over to you, General E evaluator.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Imran Rana, and as we toured the breakfast table, we chance upon so many interesting dishes. And it is difficult to choose which one to attack first, but that's the advantage of a buffet. You can eat them all, so our next dish is of course our favorite omelette. And serving up the delicious omelette for breakfast is Toastmaster Shamil Sheriar. Who will be evaluating Toastmaster Muhammad Talha's speech, so Toastmaster Shamil. Please bring the omelette and serve it to Toastmaster Talha.
Am I audible? Thank you, General E evaluator, I wish you had given me the fried egg and toast is your omelette because that's my favorite part of the breakfast. Okay, TM Muhammad Talha, I enjoy your speech very much. About related to seasoning, seasons and farming, I feel like the seasons changing and harvesting were metaphors related to our lives. Seasons probably refers to the. Time or number of years. Cultivating the crops refers to. Refers to the experiences. Deciding our fate depending on our decisions and flirting would mean difficulties and struggle we face in our. Life which would take a vigorous mind to deal with it. Now I understand that you're using different metaphors or meanings to express your. Speech, but I felt, I felt like you were using the same hand gesture. And. And to also to point out that. You were speaking. I don't know how to say this, you was speaking a little bit too fast, so I'm assuming that you were a bit nervous. You don't need to feel nervous, you should give a speech with full confidence and relax your mind. Overall, it was a very good speech. Clarity was good, vocal variety was excellent, eye contact was great. Hand gesture was okay and audience awareness was excellent. And your comfort level could be improved. And you, you. Kept the interest of the audience very well, overall, it was a very good speech, over to you, General E evaluator.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Shamil. For not liking omelette that much but still making a great one. So of course, no breakfast table is complete without our next dish. Who recognizes this? A plate of piping hot nihari and most of us don't eat it for breakfast, but. Its very name means that it's supposed to be eaten in the morning, so it's only appropriate that. This heavy dish signifies will be prepared by our next evaluator who will be evaluating an equally heavyweight speaker. Figuratively of course, not literally, so Toastmaster Ali Asher Anjum, please. Put the pot for nari, let it simmer for the night and then serve it to Toastmaster Shamil.
Oh, you aren't audible. Again, again just. Again, just out and in. Try and test formula.
Toastmaster Ali, we could hear your background, so I can, I think we should be able to hear you now.
Oh, I am audible?
Yes. Just now you are.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much, General E evaluator, am I audible? Okay. My target speaker, Toastmaster Shama. First of all, I would like to congratulate her for her wonderful speed and for completing the project. Starting from the start, she started with a question with the audience. That was a master stroke, engage the humor. To engage the audience from the start, then she come up with her topic about the tourism, the travel. And as she start elaborating. The, the city's journey. The city's journey with facts and figures. It's, it's a, what reads, she done a complete research over the topic. And then this is a great technique in such project. Then she come up with the project that, okay. She, her son and her daughter-in-law are planning to have a travel or a journey of the Pakistan tour. To the Kundra. And then she designed a sort of project. It was a masterstroke. I must say, that your eye contact, your hand gestures, your body language and your movement was brilliant and very optimum. As per as needed. Needed. Then. The second segment where. You start taking responses from the audience. Your way of requesting people was amazing. You are welcoming people. Please, instead of the description in the planning, you convert that thing into the suggestion. That is a great technique. Then you respond to all the question very, very smartly. You repeat the question, you took the time and all such things. Everything shows that how experienced Toastmaster you are. For suggestions, these are just suggestions. You can work on a bit of your vocal variety. You can use more energy and excitement about the journey. It will also help to hook up the audience. Overall, you did a great job and congratulations. Over to you, the General Evaluator.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Ali Ashar Anjum. I am hoping that Toastmaster Shamaam enjoyed the nihari tremendously. And the next item on our buffet is another very familiar item. That is a staple and that is halwa puri and chole and dharkari. And that will be brought to you by none other than Toastmaster Ruza Kaval. Who will be evaluating Toastmaster Azar Khan's speech. Over to you, Madam President.
So much, General Evaluator. Toastmaster Azar seemed to have left the meeting after the elections, but nonetheless. Toastmaster Azar, he presented a very good idea of what a PR plan is. He explained the idea of PR first, then he gave us a lot of examples. And he walked us through the whole process, which was very engaging, was very spirited, himself engaged. And for the first time, I saw him very composed while he was giving his speech, collected and calm. That was a very, very positive point. The second thing I liked about his speech was his PowerPoint presentation. It was minimal, to the point and very, very crisp. The font was open, it was the correct size for the eyes. And it was very nice and smooth. He shared a personal story that made us understand what a PR plan can do. So that made it believable. A few things that his speech or his narration could improve with. He seemed to ask a lot of redundant questions like what, the question that would start with what or when or how. So instead of, you know, asking questions and then answering themselves, maybe he could ask the questions to the audience and take a view from the audience. And then he seems to have this usage option, huge issue. So maybe reduce that usage and add me or I, since it was his whole plan, he could have said, I have done this or I have done that or we could have done this. So the word of the connection of you and should gives a very strong image, very strong narration. So that can be reduced a little bit. What I missed a little bit was, he seemed to be all over the place. He seemed to be telling us about multiple plans. So maybe focusing on one plan would have been much more fruitful. That would make the speech more clean. With that improvement in his speech. Other than that, I don't see anything that was wrong because it's a very, very put-together speech today. And I really enjoyed listening to this whole PR plan. With that, we will continue the conversation.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Toastmaster Ruza. That was delicious as well. So, Miss Timer, can you tell me whether everyone qualified?
Everyone except for the. Except for the. Except for the VP, VP, MVP elect. Elect Toastmaster Imran Rana was not, but, but everyone was.
Okay, so not a good sign at all. Anyhow, I'm floating the poll for best evaluator. So everyone, please cast your vote for best evaluator. And in the meantime, let's move forward to our breakfast buffet. Now we are with the prepared speech evaluation, so now it's time for. Let's see what do we have now. Oh, another amazing dish, fires. I don't know what do they call them in English and honestly, I don't care because I know they don't eat them in England, so.
They're called trotters.
Sorry?
They call trotters.
Can you write, can you write that in the chat box, Toastmaster Ena? Because that's very interesting.
I will, I'll do that.
So, thank you so much. So, these will be brought together by our grammarian and word master of the day, Toastmaster Latif. So, over to you, Toastmaster Latif.
Good evening, one and all. Thank you, General Evaluator. First, I would like to, yes, TM Azar, TM Asgar is there. Thank you for switching on the camera. I want to congratulate you or maybe I want to bow to you. You are the university of using. Approbations or good words of English or sentences. So you are the university and I tried to even listen and write, sorry, I could not catch because you were coming one after the other. So I don't ask me why I could not, yes, while editing for sure I will listen again to it and maybe that time I can say what is interesting. Other than that, after the university of English. I found many, many speakers who have come to the podium, they have used many times the and. And I went there, and I have gone there. Then I was here, then if I was, so why don't we just take a pause and eliminate these. Extra sentences because it will make us more encouraging. Good usage of grammar which according to me, I'm not a. Even at home also, if there is a English series going on at Netflix, I don't watch. So it's just like that. I like few attractive grammars which is like another same story. Hold your horses. Nurture like mother and defend like a father. Optimal was a good word, I liked it. Compost is used many a times. And then one of the lines which I always love to catch from DTM Talha is like, you know, something different will come. Shimmer it for TM Shamaam. So, I mean, I loved it each and everything. This was the, my grammarian report. Now for the word vigorous. It was an interesting word and thank you. Actually, sometimes I feel disappointed when it's not used many a times. Or never used. And unfortunately, I was disappointed initially. Knowing that there is no table topic. Otherwise, in table topic, we used to, you know, force this word to be used. So Ali Ashar Anjum has used, TM Asgar has used, myself, DTM Talha. I have seen, Taha also heard it, listened from TM Shamaam and TM Shamil. And just if I have missed out anyone, my bad. Thank you and over to you, General Evaluator.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Latif. Sometimes the trotters fulfill your soul and sometimes they may give you indigestion. So, which is which, I leave the decision up to you. But, again, amazing job by Toastmaster Latif Mansoori as always. And next, we have. Porssas. And they are served by our newest member, Toastmaster Rabia Zishan, because she will be the accountant today. So, Toastmaster Rabia, please bring those porssas and let us check them out.
Thank you so much, DTM Talha. I hope I'm audible. And being the.
You could raise your voice a little bit. If you could raise your voice, yeah.
Okay, okay. Being the newest member, it was a very hard job for me to count the hours for so experienced. Toastmasters. I'll start with Ali Ashar Anjum. He had six hours in his, throughout the program. Ma'am Ruza Kaval had five. TM Talha had twelve. TM Hina Ali had eight, Ali Hasnain had seven. TM Asgar in his speech had none hours and hours, but during his role, he had eleven. TM Shamaam had nineteen, TM Latif had nine. The timer, TM Azhar, if I'm not pronouncing his name wrong, he had five. Ingenieur Talha had nine. And Imran Rana had five. Shamil had only one and Kareem, TM Kareem had two. And that's all from me today.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Rabia for that amazing report. And remind us to never appoint an accountant from someone who belongs to the education sector, but. Amazing job done. And even though you're a new member, you have already contributed so much to our club, so thank you for that. Now, of course, we have the timer support, but I think we could skip over it. Because who just wants to have tea on such an expensive buffet, right? So, let's move on now to. The general evaluation report. And that is brought to you by myself in the form of this beautiful cup of coffee. So, I'm trying to learn to make this, but one day I will succeed. So, in the meantime, the general evaluation of the meeting. First of all. Today was a very motivating meeting in a lot of respects. And I'm not talking about the election. Of course, election time is fun time. And we enjoy a large attendance. We get to see each other, we get to hear each other in a different light. And there's that whole atmosphere of congeniality and excitement. But. I would like to point out that today our speeches matches the atmosphere of the election. Perfectly. The kind of speeches we had today from Toastmaster Asgar's speech to Toastmaster Shamaam's project. To Toastmaster Ali Ashar's project, to Toastmaster Muhammad Talha's tips for self-development, of course. Toastmaster Azar Khan's beautiful summary of his PR activities for our district. I mean, where else would you find such people who have these stories to tell? Please listen to me very carefully, all the members of KDC. Only in KDCs you will find such stories. All together, under one roof, in one meeting. And that is such a source of pride, that is such an amazing feeling to be associated with this Trump. And I'm thankful to each and every one of our speakers today. Because today's speeches were not just written, they have been lived. And there's nothing that can match a speech that has been lived. So, that feeling of genuine emotion that came through in each and every speech was unparalleled. And that only comes when you are sufficiently advanced in your respective pathways. And you have applied sufficient time and effort to prepare for your speech. So I have absolutely nothing but praise for the prepared speeches today and also for the evaluations, of course. But evaluations are of course always high quality at KDC and so are the facilitator reports. Yes, there were, as always, some time management issues, but the fact that it's roughly three hours and fifteen minutes after the start of the meeting. And we've been through an election and we are almost to the end of the meeting. That is a big achievement for us today and I want to compliment not only the CLC for this. I want to compliment our tech host for the election, Toastmaster Fazan Abasi. For ensuring that the process took place with maximum efficiency. I want to also thank all the facilitators who ensured that this would happen. So, today's meeting as always was one of those meetings that will last in our memory. And we are blessed to have such meetings every week. The only improvement area would be or could be maybe our start time. And that is something we should focus upon because at start time, at the meeting, at six thirty, many of our members are. Amid commuting. And, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you so much, Toastmaster Saad. We had a listener today and the listener was not listening closely enough because they should have interrupted me. So, Toastmaster Taha Hassan, please. So, so these, you are supposed to bring us these delicious milkshakes in the form of your listening session. So, over to you.
Thank you.
Everyone, please turn on your microphone. So these are delicious.
Let's try to digest all those that. Future president served us. So I'm going to give you some questions and I'm going to check whether you people were listening. Let's start. This question. Who said it? I am not saying I'm a hero, but somebody has to do it.
Kareem Meghani.
Okay, that's right. Correct. You were being in a big session, three hours, I think. Remember, people's memory must be up and down. So let's start again. One more question. Best award taken by Gulam Khadir and Toastmaster Latif. Now, who said that?
TM Azar.
It was Imran, Imran.
TM Azgar.
TM Azgar. Let's guess who, okay? Who's? And whose daughter is a foodie? They loves local protein on a road.
Daughter-in-law. That was Shamaam.
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 And now, why KDC wanted to move the guest to the waiting room? Which is a really good question.
Because of the elections.
To have elections.
Yeah.
After elections, I think DTM Talha stayed members.
For one more. If you don't decide. If you don't decide your deadlines, it means one will face more.
Asgar, Asgar, Azar.
Azar Khan, Muhammad Azar.
Rome wasn't built in a day.
Toastmaster Talha. Toastmaster Talha.
Rome wasn't.
Toastmaster Asgar. Toastmaster Asgar.
Toastmaster Ali Ashar Anjum.
Toastmaster Asgar said in his speech. No, no, Toastmaster Asgar said it in his speech and Toastmaster Imran said it in the evaluation.
Sorry, Imran.
And was the last question.
Let's see how.
Yeah. Who, whose instinct, this is very funny, whose instinct is not trusted by his wife?
Kareem Meghani first.
Thank you.
Oh, no, it's.
Thank you.
Having second thoughts with the vaccine. No, Kareem Meghani.
Okay.
This is my. Long meeting, you were very legitimate. Some fun questions that I have. Okay, that's interesting. Thank you.
DTM Talha, DTM Talha. He also could not capture anything from TM Azar's, Asgar's speech. So you are brilliant. He also could not capture anything from TM Azar's, Azgar's speech. So you are brilliant, TM Azgar.
Really apologize.
Well, uh what can I say? Like, it was, it is so, he's, his speech is always so full of uh uh creative usage of language and imagination, that it's hard to single out anything. But it always, always leaves an impact. So, I I will stop the buffet now because the uh the time is over and you need to move away from the tables, but not before voting for the best facilitator. Meanwhile, let me hand over the charge to our Toastmaster of the Day, Toastmaster Mohammed Azkar. Over to you.
Thank you, general evaluator. Uh Toastmaster of the Day at this uh stage, I mean, after the general evaluator, it's very dangerous to keep all of you on waiting. Uh I would like to move away immediately as much as possible. I I'm just here to say thank you uh for all the session that you were with me and I tried my best to coordinate all issues. So I would like to go uh to the president before announcing. I mean, the president will suppose to announce the awards, right? The best speakers and the best evaluator, if I'm not wrong, Talha. Okay, so this is the
You need to ask, ask for the vote for big two.
Oh, yes, please. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Please, meanwhile, please vote for big two. Uh big two is consists of the TM Toastmaster of the Day, Mohammed Azgar and General Evaluator, uh DTM Talab in um Ahmed. So, over to you, President, now.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster of the evening, Toastmaster Azar. And today finally we had our elections and thank you so much, Toastmaster Hina for leading that, cheering it and going through the whole process with us. It's been a really learning journey for me also. And thank you, Toastmaster Fazan, for conducting it, the votes and everything. And everyone else who casted their votes joined the session. It has been really heartening session. Uh for the Critics' Choice Award for today, best speaker according to the international speech ballot. Speaker who spoke speaks with a lot of humor, Toastmaster Azar. For the Critics' Choice today. Congratulations, Toastmaster Azar. For our regular vote, DTM Talha, if they are compiled, we can announce them.
Yes, uh thank you so much. So, best speaker goes to uh once again, Toastmaster Mohammed Azar. But let me warn you that there were three contestants that lost to you by one vote only. So that is indicative of the quality of speeches today. But congratulations, uh best evaluator today. To uh today goes to again, very tough competition, almost a tie between three people, but that tie was broken, not by me, Toastmaster Rusa Kaval.
Thank you so much.
Okay, best facilitator award goes by a long margin to the person who made us all feel miserable. Toastmaster Rabia Zishan, congratulations.
Congratulations, Toastmaster Rabia.
And finally, best big two award, again, very narrowly contested. And once again, a last minute vote. Uh so, yeah, unfortunately, it happens to be me. Uh but you know what, like, it's just one vote difference once again. So congratulations, Toastmasters. Over to you, Madam President.
So much, Madam President. So with that, I think it's a wrap. And the meeting stands adjourned, but do join us this week again on the sixth, my speak and KTC joint meeting. Uh we will be, what time is the meeting weekend, Talha?
It will be, I think, uh it will be six thirty to eight thirty on Sunday.
So do join us at sunset thirty to eight thirty and for the goal players who are joining us, they all know. For those who aren't, please join us. It will be a fun meeting because these two clubs are in the top ten. So they are one of the top clubs and that is how we are arranging the whole meeting. So we will get to meet a lot of people in this meeting. With that, let's meet on six.
Sorry, sorry, Toastmaster. Sorry, Madam, Madam President, I'd like to announce one more thing that has been cooking for a while. I think it's high time that we announce that now. Shall I announce it?
Sure.
Okay, next week's regular meeting, next Wednesday's meeting. We all want you to book your speeches and roles for that, except for the big four because guest wise. Big four are being performed by our international speech contest contestants of the district. So, uh that means that Toastmaster Numa Nawab, Toastmaster Vani Abbasi, Toastmaster Jaya Jari and Toastmaster Mohammed Farooq, they will be the big four in KTC's next meeting. So, everybody, the floor is open for all of you to book roles and speeches. Because I think it will be once again another amazing and memorable meeting. Thank you so much.
Laughing, laughing.
Thank you.
Thank you.